The board held an executive session prior to this Board of Supervisors meeting. The next agenda item is a public comment on any agenda items other than zoning. We are going to give you an opportunity for public comment later on in the agenda after Chris does his manager review of zoning. So if anybody who gave me a yellow slip and wants to talk about anything other than zoning, this is the time to do it. Don, do you want to go first? Don Morgan?
I want to speak to the commercial vehicle restrictions. I'm Don Morgan, live in Hertfeld. I took a look at websites to see exactly why it makes reasonable sense to restrict heavy vehicles, trucks, especially loaded trucks. And if you look at the first source I've got there, Government Accountability Office Study, they said that the truck axle carrying 18,000 pounds is only nine times heavier than a 2,000 pound automobile axle, but it does 5,000 times more damage to the road. Sort of shocked me that it was that big a differential. There's another estimate down there provided by civil engineering professors at Cal State and the University of California Davis, in which they said the average annual maintenance cost per heavy truck per day amounts to $7.60 per mile per year, while the corresponding cost per passenger car is eight cents. So all that suggests that we should be restricting trucks on our roads because they do severe damage and a big part of the township's budget every year consists of road maintenance. And as a matter of fact, I guess we've held up on Hillendale because it just wasn't enough money in the till to repair that till this coming year. That's it. Thank you.
I have some other yellow slips. If anybody has a public comment on an agenda item other than zoning, this is the time to stand up and give your public comment. If not, you'll have an opportunity to after Chris's zoning presentation. Next agenda item is the minutes we have in the materials, the minutes from the February 24th, 2025 board meeting. Can I have a motion to approve such minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the treasurer's report. So we have paid invoices in the amount of $221,745.94 and unpaid invoices in the amount of $570,050.31. Can I have a motion to approve such paid and unpaid invoices?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor?
I have abstention.
Any opposed?
Yeah, I have an abstention. I need to abstain on one invoice for $3,008.06 as for it is my employer's business that it's my revenue.
Thank you, Steve. Next on the agenda item is the monthly manager report. Chris?
If you want, I could just deliver it from here rather than walking around real quick. But as part of some request to maybe get some more continuous information out to the residents about just what we're doing. As a township, in terms of providing services, I'm kind of wanted to fold in a monthly report for just township services. And two, will be in the future state of this, we're going to add these to our agendas and minutes section under monthly manager reports. You can go through and kind of see all these as they come forward as like a, in lieu of like a, like a more informal kind of newsletter. So if this is just telling us kind of what we're working on as a township. Let me make sure I present this here real quick. Right. There we go. So this is our monthly manager report for February. And normally this kind of goes over departmental categories. So we'll start off with our, first and foremost, our communications. And this one's actually interesting because you look at it, we had a noticeable spike in February in terms of people going to the township and that coincides with a lot of the interest in zoning. So thank you for everybody for expressing interest, but it's also one where you start noticing that we're not necessarily got the correlating spike on our Facebook page. So that also means that people are probably engaging with township social media, excuse me, not engaging with township social media, but still getting narratives about it. So would continue to get the word out there that the township does have a governmental official page. We post all meeting announcements well in advance of all meetings with links to materials and would encourage those who already pretty naturally already have Facebook accounts, if they want to get the source of the actual crux of the information that's provided by the township, to please subscribe. And with that also on our township website, we have a lot of views and particularly we know kind of what pages they're going to, but we don't have a lot of email subscribers. So one thing we want to make sure people encourage on our website is sign up for notifications so then you can get kind of a bit of redundancy in terms of information coming from the township, but always an opportunity to plug our township website and communications. Real quick, just kind of going over our parks and open space initiatives. Obviously, the season's kind of opening up. Good weather is coming down the pipeline here and so we're starting to get the parks conditioned and ready to go for our seasonal event schedule. I'm not going to go through line item by line item here because I just want to be able to provide that fact that this is currently in our agenda. And if you're interested in what's happening in our parks initiatives and other departments, this is the kind of landing pad to see what's happening right now. So not only just what's happening from a event perspective, but also how much of our time is invested by our park staff in terms of how much maintenance is being done on the sites that we have, if people aren't abreast of kind of how much property that we have for parks maintenance. It's over 400 acres and not inclusive of trails. And so we have a two-person team, so it's a lot of coverage of ground to do over the course of the entire township. And it's not like these areas are side by side. We have one on the north side, one in the middle, and one on the south side of the township. So with that, a lot of our focus has been on grounds maintenance and that's essentially just manicuring the sites, picking up sticks, getting through like the after winter and storm seasons for the winter storms to get everything ready. And of course, a lot of that is right now currently on the Smithley Preserve and we kind of roll these in months as well. So I'll just kind of go through these, but essentially none of this should be kind of new news, the fact that we're doing park maintenance. So with that, moving on to our airport operations. For those who aren't familiar with our airport operations, we have a kind of administrative function, a flight school function, a maintenance function, as well as just a normal kind of events programming schedule as well. So this is just a previous 30-day, last, next 30-day type view there. So if you're interested in what's happening at the airport, this is a good kind of up-to-date version of it. And of course, this is the next 30 days. So with that, of course, if you remember, the airport kind of capital project is the East Parallel Taxiway Improvement Project, so that's currently underway. And that was one where essentially you're just waiting for all of the asphalt plants to open up here in the March timeframe. And so that project should be coming forward. So if you're driving up Newark Road, you look to the left, you see a lot of construction work being done on the airport. That's what's happening right now. The parallel taxiway on the eastern side of the runway there is under improvements. And of course, our flight school, our flight hours, you're talking about a ramp up in seasonality. So going into the spring timeframe, it's kind of over. A course of a year, you can see kind of the peak seasons and the low season. So we're coming up into March and peak seasons are coming up. And of course, we have to make sure that our aircraft are ready to go. Public Works, more of a long list. This is more reflection of the fact that they cover an extensive amount of work that's done outwards in the township in terms of sign improvements, road improvements, stormwater improvements that are done. And it's an extensive amount of work, the heavy seasonal storms that we got in January, February, provided an extensive amount of damage that we had to do a lot of cleanup with. And I think we're, and I don't know if Kenny's in the room or not, are we still good on salt anymore, unforeseen storms coming? But good to say that in about, about four weeks, we went through an entire season's worth of purchase of salt. And I think overall Commonwealth of Pennsylvania was at a net negative, or a net deficit for everything. So if you do need salt and another kind of late seasonal storm comes up, good news is, is there's nothing left. So we're all in the same boat together. This is just some general conditions that you see on a day-in-day basis here in the township. So just some examples of some tree removal situations along Star Room Road there, just example of a stormwater inlet box replacement project that we had to get done. As you can see, the really good condition that our existing infrastructure is in, this is essentially all throughout the township. So essentially, we try to do these as much as possible to get out in front of it. And then last but not least, if you have been, excuse me, on Baltimore Pike recently going past the police station, you notice that the one side of the parking lot is completely ripped up at the Public Works facility. It's because we're currently under improvement for replacing all the fuel storage tanks that were essentially obsolete and not actually operable to their fullest extent. That was part of a capital project replacement. And of course, this allows us to purchase gas to allow for all of our responders as well as township municipal vehicles to do refueling operations at a much lowered cost for the township overall. You just need to get the site up and running again. So the forecast for that is essentially by the end of the month, if not early next month to be complete. And we spend our dollars. And this is one where it depends on mostly weather, but normally it's usually an even distribution that skews more towards roads at the end of the summer when the final road paving program is kind of implemented, which is usually around August and September. So it'll be kind of even and then you'll see a massive skew for them on the year-to-date. That number's rough around September and October. And of course, it was brought up, the big paving program initiative we're doing this year in two years is the complete renovation of Hillendale Road. So that's a big project that we're going to be working on. So if everybody misses all the potholes and everything on Hillendale, get your fund in today because it's going to be hopefully improved here in the next two years. Community development, so track and just development applications. So those are the current ones, both in queue for applications and also started projects in the township. People haven't gotten updated and you're driven around, you see some on Bancroft Road, the 98 townhomes are currently right now, I think, accepting permits for build outs there. So that's a work in progress that should be completed by spring timeframe of next year. And of course, on Thompson Road as well, I think it's the 47 houses that are going to be built there. Is that correct? You can just nod and let me know, Robert, then. And then, of course, the New Garden Elementary project as well, and all are on track. With that, I wanted to make sure that, you know, as of '23, we didn't actually have an adopted commercial fire inspection program in the township. So this was a newer initiative and now that we've had the ability to kind of get out there and integrate our fire marshal position to do fire marshal investigations, we're seeing some trends in the community. So we want to make sure that we're publicly educating about a lot of the issues about fire safety. Fire marshal is mostly about taking investigations to do kind of proactive preventative education to make sure that it's not repeated twice. And this is one, we're seeing a lot of faulty electrical work DIY projects and initiatives. And this is just an example of a property, we moved all the address here for just kind of public updates and everything. But it's always good to know that, that there is somebody at least getting an eye on it if it does come forward and then educating the property. Or in this case, it was just an example of a lower kind of tier response, but always good to provide information to make these improvements because you never know kind of what the condition of your neighbor's property is. And then that's an instance where if you have a fire, we've had a lot of high winds and that property problem becomes your property problem. Speaking of which, some other interesting things. If you went by the Wells Fargo, I think it was two weeks ago, vehicle potentially just kind of hit the throttle, went over the curb thing and ran into the side of the building. So always interesting when you get these phone calls in the middle of a Friday afternoon. But that was the one where they responded. Luckily, no one was hurt and minor damage to the vehicle, surprisingly more to the building. I don't know if that's a good sign for the integrity of the building, but as I say, that these are the types of things that we have to respond to. This one was just more, if you're familiar, that the end of last year, we had a lot of public burn bans in effect throughout the entire Chester County region. In fact, it was a lot of statewide and kind of regional wide as well. We were in the middle of a drought, but we still have people and issues with doing onsite open pit burning, which was not banned in effect, but it's still part of one where we want to make sure that the fire is contained, it's being done in a controlled burn environment if it's doing it. And we have our code enforcement function that oversees that and responds to it accordingly. Because in this instance, it's more of a open area situation. But the next one, this person was doing the same thing next to the house, high winds, dry conditions, and they burned their own house down. So it's one where there's a reason why we have to respond and provide these public educational pieces because in effect, you never know when you're going to get the worst-case conditions. This case, it was a worst-case scenario. We did institute, or excuse me, implement our rental inspection program at the beginning of January 24. And so this is one where we're now one full year in and it's now available for kind of taking like a year-over-year view. So we're going to start looking at January over January, March, February over February and stuff like that. But this is just to say that we're now in two months' worth of activity in 2025. For those unfamiliar with rental inspections, it's a ability for township to go do kind of like a safer occupancy type inspection. And of course, these are the common issues that we're seeing with vents, general conditions of the property, anti-tips, which are those kind of keep your bureaus and your dressers and drawers and large things kind of secured to the walls and just making sure that the properties have proper smoke preventative, excuse me, smoke and carbon monoxide preventative detection devices, as well as they have all their permits up to date. For year-to-date notices of violations, we're going to start kind of showing like a map and kind of, we're taking that and trying to understand, is there a way to do more proactive kind of community education type of enforcement so we're not going out just responding? We can go out and kind of engage where we see it the most. So we're not just errantly driving around. We know kind of where, where some of our more problem properties are right now. But just kind of the, the most common outcome of a notice of violation is usually just first engagement and education. A lot of people just aren't aware of the property maintenance code that we have. And also our code enforcement officer function is just that kind of first line of engagement to let them know, hey, this is in violation of X, Y, and Z. They have 30 days to respond to improve or remedy the issue. And then normally, that's kind of what brings it in. It's very rarely escalates above that. In terms of year-to-date permits, with our post kind of investments to adding staffing to be able to help out the permit function, we've seen a pretty significant lift and increase for permit activity. Shocker, if you enforce your permit functions, people will then get the permits and pay for them. So it's been added to revenues as well and also making sure that the building function in the township is being executed by the township, which is very helpful. So year-to-date, you can see just the jumps in just Q1 in and of itself. So we're going to continue to monitor kind of year-over-year kind of, is it a kind of established threshold and kind of raise the bar up? Are we seeing some different troughs? So we'll be able to get more permit activity learnings over time. And that's it. So I just wanted to provide that for any questions before we hop into the rest of the agenda.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Next section of the agenda is new business.
If you can go to the microphone, just for public comments on this, it helps to record that to get it out.
It was kind of hard to find the burn ban information on the website. It would be great to have like a flashing gif like "don't burn" or something just on the homepage would be helpful to the community and the same for the Facebook.
Yeah, I'll make sure that we engage with our provider is a company called Civic Plus that provides like the structure and template of the page and then just different ways to provide like higher level notifications.
Okay, thanks.
Next item on the agenda is the zoning overview and frequently asked questions. Chris is going to provide a presentation on the proposed zoning project and zoning map update. After Chris's presentation, if anybody would like, like to make a public comment, they're welcome too. At the back of the room are yellow slips, so please fill out your name and address and bring it up to me. Again, we want to limit it to three minutes. We want to give everybody an opportunity to make public comments, so we ask you, don't go beyond three minutes. So Chris, turning it over to you.
All right. Well, good evening, members of the board, residents, staff, Chris Heim, Township Manager. And tonight, just in understanding, post-public outreach meeting number three, just the next wave of just interest and questions and concerns that came forward, we're trying to provide this as like a, hopefully, an ability to address a lot of points that have been brought up and also to kind of show where we're at in the process, what this all means. Hopefully, the goal of tonight is to kind of, not essentially alleviate all concerns, but try to address and then get more inputs and then kind of the whole part of this process is we're in the iterative function currently right now. So the other part of this is just, you know, not necessarily saying that this has already been completed, it's still under draft and reviews and we're in that part right now. So it's actually good that we have a lot of participation. So with that, and of course, my clicker doesn't work on the first try. Nope, not working. All right. Can you advance for me? There you go. All right. Well, slide number one is just more of a kind of what I just alluded to. Is there still time? Is this done? And the answer is no, it's not done. So with that, if you had been part of the kind of dialogue fence, the initiation of this project to where we are at to date, it's one where it kind of came in as a grant-funded project that we issued an RFP for, it was in December of 2023, as part of an update to our zoning map for review, which was part of our comprehensive plan to do that type of review. And we'll go over kind of what that means with the comprehensive plan and everything to date. But with that, there's a way that you adopt a zoning ordinance in Pennsylvania. There's the one that's defined by the Municipal Planning Code. And Municipal Planning Code is a very structured document that's adopted by your PA General Assembly back in 1968 that says, if you're going to do it, this is how you do it, as a legal function in order to adopt zoning ordinances in Pennsylvania as a municipality. And so by the PA Municipal Planning Code, you essentially have your planning commission, they hold one hearing to review the ordinance and then one meeting to adopt it. So that's generally how it's done if you're not doing this as a public process. That's, that's the, that's essentially what it's mandated to do. So you can see in this, and what we ended up doing was very much not that. So we wanted to bring in the county, we wanted to fold in some county planning initiatives because they do a lot of support and recommendations for townships and localities in Chester County about what some types of programs that they would like to partner with. And this is one where they provide as a function of their Chester County Planning, excuse me, Planning Department, assistance with adopting an ordinance because it is a big task to do and a lot of townships don't have their own planning departments. In fact, very little actually do. So with that, they say if you want to have access to grant funding to do it, we recommend that you, number one, you have a dedicated task force. And so in this instance, that task force is comprised of our, mostly our planning commission members because per the Municipal Planning Code, the only people who are involved really by the code to adopt an ordinance is the planning commission adopts a draft, excuse me, proposes a recommended ordinance and the board approves it. So by your task force, as an extension of the Chester County Planning Commission grant function, is to have planning commission members on the task force. That's just in terms of execution. So those are more, think of it like due diligence type reviews, a lot of homework, it's very kind of the craft of digging into all of the details and coming up with something essentially that's ready to be reviewed by the public. In order to kind of put the public stuff out there, you need to do the homework first. And so that's why there was 18 staff meetings, we're about halfway through those as well right now. But then the other one is you want to make sure that along the way, you're engaging the public. And so we've already had three of those meetings, starting around the summer timeframe of last year is more of a kickoff presentation. We had one in the late fall, early winter timeframe. Excuse me, that was mostly about talking about the character of the township and going over, excuse me, just some of the kind of diagnosis issues about our existing zoning ordinance, kind of getting the why, what, what needs to be looked at and how can we improve this thing and modernize it, excuse me, as well. And then the, the most recent one was about the workshop, talking about the ordinance map and the proposed districts and a lot of the uses and definitions. And then finally, the next planning, assuming the public outreach meeting will just be a continuation of that. And then we go into the public hearing process, which is kind of another function of just public inputs until you do final adoption. So that's to say that even though we're in kind of area three, this is like the longest part of the entire project. So we're currently in this phase right now. So with that, I kind of continue link, I'll continue to plug it. Please sign up in any of these areas to get information and resources. So all you have to do is like any other subscription is to get your, your email signed up and you will get all of the agendas, alerts, calendar events, everything else like that, even additive township news flash, of course, all parks and rec events are in there as well, if we want township updates. But if you just want to go just to get project updates, we also put that on our website. We put a zoning ordinance and map update after the presentation, I'll show that real quick. And you can just sign up just to get map update events as well. So next slide, please. So after you understand where are we at in the process, is this is the done deal and of course, we're in the middle and the answer was no, just why are we doing this in the first place? What's the reason for it? It's a common question and I can understand that as well. This seems to be coming out of nowhere. When in fact, it's not coming out of nowhere, it's mostly coming out of the fact that your 2018 comprehensive plan that was part of a process that started, I think in 2016, identified a lot of things that you want to do as a community, but the underlying execution and implementation of that comprehensive plan involved a lot of reviews and renewal of your existing zoning ordinance that has been in place for a very long time. And with that, that outlines some land use outcomes because you talk about zoning, you're talking about land use outcomes. This is verbatim scripted out of your actual comprehensive plan. So it talks about growth initiatives around growth corridors, those primary ones being obviously Route 41, Baltimore Pike, infill and development in certain areas around there, up around the airport. You also want to make sure that you're keeping the integrity of your current existing character and nuances with open space and history and everything that's still part of it. But then, of course, you want to do other things in terms of just additive housing. You want to be able to address these types of issues in your township. So that's when you're talking about what this means in practicality. The comp plan sends one thing, but then the zoning ordinance and the diagnosis of the issues with the ordinance in its existing state was, well, your comp plan doesn't match your ordinance. So that's one where the whole goal is to kind of align those two documents together and that's a big function of this one because right now they don't match. And that's what, if you see it on there, the zoning diagnosis memo goes into full detail length of just what are all the reasons for what's wrong with the existing ordinance? This is kind of itemized more of that list here, so I don't have to go into all of these. But for those people who also understand that not only is it not executing the vision of the township, but there's a lot of issues with just the, what, last 40 years of execution of your existing ordinance in terms of just the amount of effort. It relies on legal hearings and processes, maybe historical understanding of residential, next to, we'll call them the ag-industrial related functions of mushroom going, maybe over time, those have kind of maybe not become a simpatico, so we want to look at that. And then just a lot of issues with existing non-conforming uses because we've essentially allowed, excuse me, kind of fighting some contention here, excuse me, just in execution over time, it leads to a lot of discontinuity of this is what your zoning ordinances has been done in terms of just, you know, private property owners coming through, going through the land development process. And it's one where the vision of a district and the execution of a district don't necessarily look like they're the same over time. So, and of course, all the other ones there, but you can go to the next slide here. So of course, in the last slide, what's a comprehensive plan? A comprehensive plan is not some sort of like legal binding document, but it is a strategy. It's a visioning statement that says that this is what we want to be as a community. You have one, you had one, this was just the most recent update. You generally renew it every 10 years as just a best practice for municipal government. So we are planning to do this again in 2027 timeframe. But it's one where if you're thinking about what do I need to do as a township staff to execute the most pressing strategic matter, you're going to just pick up that comprehensive plan and go, where are we at in this list? So that's kind of like a foundational element of this is the direction and drive for your community. And with that, a big part of it is, is your zoning ordinance and your ability, excuse me, and I won't be too redundant on that one, to execute your comprehensive plan. So zoning is just essentially, and I'm not going to go over bradym here, but it essentially just aligns the vision of the outcomes associated with land uses in areas in the township and then with a form-based approach to it regulates essentially all those things that we think about or don't think about, excuse me, like the, the size and bulk of the structure being built on the property, the adjacency or offsets of that property up to the property line, all those more nuanced discussions in terms of like, how can I build something on this property? I already alluded to it, you know, zoning ordinances and who makes changes to it. So our So our ordinance has already been in place for at least 40 years. That's when we adopted it. My takeaway in all of this is the fact that Pennsylvania said you can do it in 1968 and New Garden didn't do it until 1987. So we said, I don't know about this whole zoning thing. We're going to wait about 20 years and then we're going to get on that. But it's one where, in that same manner, you can think about that time lag. You know, what happened even in that timeframe that could have changed and altered outcomes that you would even see it today? So it's one where it's, you, you want to continually keep on top of it because if you have a certain vision or aesthetic you're trying to do, but you're not actively kind of conditioning or reconditioning your zoning, you're never going to get to that ultimate outcome. And we can go into the next slide. I want to make sure there's enough time for questions here as well. So this is the kind of slide that came up the most of, of course, of the public inputs from the last week and a half or so, even before that. It's just what are the types of zoning uses? So you have your buy rights, your conditionals and your special exceptions. Now with that, all of these are what we consider to be legal lawful uses. So even if you put a buy right use, a conditional use or a special exception use, these two areas is just, do they conform with the overall district? And they have to go through kind of like a separate, albeit just a, a, a review to say, are they amenable for certain conditions on that property? But it's not necessarily like a determining factor for denial. You can deny, but then the property owner has to then say, well, the township denied it. Even though my case was, I should be able to do this. They can just out, go around the municipality and go to the chess, or in this case, it would be the Court of Common Pleas, your most local one, and they can get a decision there as well. So it's not a way of overly restricting uses. It just has to go through a separate process to get to an approval. So if it meets those conditions, you are, in this instance, and I'm looking at our solicitor to make sure I'm not speaking out of turn, required to approve it as part of it or.
Yes.
So with that, and then it has to just go through two different determining bodies. Conditional uses are primarily through approvals for your board supervisors. If anyone's ever been in this room for a conditional use hearing, we've had a lot of them. It's one where it's kind of like a formal court-type proceeding, if you will. It's very kind of just structured in order to be a party, to be able to speak at a conditional use hearing. If you're adjacent property owner, you have to be within 500 feet of that property line for the associated use. So otherwise, you don't have the ability to even speak at the hearing. And even then, just by showing up and having a wave of people to say, we don't like this thing happening here because it's conformity with everything, you don't need to necessarily have the ability to disapprove it. And if you do, it's one where you can be superseded as well. So this isn't like a way of saying that we can define outcomes to restrict. This is just the avenue and the way that they have to be approved. And special exceptions are more for the zoning hearing board as well. So it's just kind of similar process, similar outcomes, different governing bodies overseeing both functions. Next slide. So with that, of course, I got a lot of inputs from members of the community in this general southeast district of the township. And they were very invested into the outcome of buy right uses as a function of how those areas are zoned. And I think it was one where there was a kind of a disconnect of understanding that what we're proposing in the zoning ordinance is a new influx. We never had buy right. Buy right use has always been associated with these zoning districts. For the last 40 years, especially for the highway commercial, I think the UD was updated in the late 90s. But at least for the last 40 to 30 years, buy right was capable of happening in these, in this specific area. And of course, everywhere else in the township, I'm just using this as a use case here. So with that, they say, well, why is the list expanding? Why are there more buy right uses? And there's a reason for that. You want to define associated uses to almost a line item level of detail. So then you can say, we want to put buy right here, we want to put conditions on this one, we want to put special exceptions on this one, but you want to define the use. And the reason is because if it's not defined, it can technically go any, anywhere in the township. So you have to define it to a zoning district. Otherwise, then they can propose, well, if it's not defined, I can then, as a legal lawful use, put this anywhere I want to put it. So that's where you have to kind of bucket your uses into districts that kind of meet the vision you're trying to get to anyway. That's why I talk about that kind of alignment function. So if we want associated uses for business and industry here, because that's been seen as like a viable commercial corridor, at least historically, you're going to associate that with functional business uses on that corridor, just a function of the proposal. Now, is that saying that everything today needs to be all permissible by right? It's a blend. You can have some under conditional uses, some under special exceptions. But that doesn't mean you can ultimately deny them as well. So with that, you would have to come up with a separate zoning district to say, well, if we don't like those types of uses, let's find somewhere else in the township to put them. That's kind of the function of zoning. You have to pick the places where it's like, we'll put all the bad stuff there and that's where we want it to go. Sorry if I'm paraphrasing. But that's the function and execution of zoning. So really, that's why we like to have this kind of public input because people start saying and thinking, well, I don't like those types of uses associated with my property area. And two, I don't think I really ever understood that the fact that it was always a possibility. Now that I understand that, how do I want to shape the outcome and change for my community based off of how it's zoned and what are those uses are? And that's where we're at in the process. So we're collecting all these inputs and these are being kind of structured into a sequence of updates for the zoning task force and future public outreach meetings to show draft proposal map one looks like this. We get feedback and then we potentially just kind of reassociate those uses in these other blended zoning districts to kind of alleviate that concern of having maybe uses that we don't like to have in this area, we put them somewhere else. But you still have to define them all and you still have to put them somewhere. Otherwise, they can go anywhere. So we can go on to the next slide. So even if it's buy right, even if it's conditional, even if it's special exception, do the township zoning districts and buyer uses seem that they get to bill without restriction? The answer is no. So not only do we have our zoning ordinance, we have this thing in our chapter, forgetting all my chapters here, 170 TAC 2, SALDO, subdivision and land development ordinance. So this is a sense of a guardrail kind of function for the land development process. It says, even if you're proposing it as a use and it's a legal lawful use, you're still subject to an intense amount of reviews going through the process. And this is all still innately part of the land development function. And it's one where usually it's in this SALDO clause because it's more of the minutia. It's one where you can pull elements of this forward in your zoning ordinance and then you're kind of just double stating it, but it doesn't necessarily ultra-restrict or ultra-clarify thing. It's just, it gives people a sense of comfort that it says it in the zoning ordinance and it says it in the SALDO. But this is one where that was another narrative of buy right means unfettered, unobstructed, was it unconditional use? That was one most used. And the answer is, is it's, it's 100% not. There still is a function of structured land development that goes through reviews by ultimately approval by the board supervisor, through the planning commission, sometimes through your zoning hearing board. So this is the execution of that one. You can go to the next slide. So how's it changing? And you can see really, you start looking at it just in terms of colorizations on the map. And I think this caused a lot of people concerns because they just understand, wait a minute, how is this color changing? Why? And why is it this kind of big glob kind of moving over this? A lot of this is just essentially, right now, in some of these areas, they're already defined as like, you know, the fact that like Candlewick HOA is under R1, that's like almost existing wise, a non-conforming use because you built it out in a manner that wasn't part of that, that we would align it with a more aligned density construct with a different, different zone there. So really, when you're talking about the biggest changes, the biggest ones, other than itemizing out all of those uses, because that's what we wanted to harp on, the residential flex. The residential flex is the biggest kind of zoning change overall. And that's one where the, the, the comp plan looks for outcomes and goals that you're trying to do as a community. And it's one where if you're trying to add additive density, it needs to take into some sort of understanding that in execution, even though it's changing the overall color on the actual parcel by parcel by parcel, there are things to consider. I think it's more on the next slide as well, but, and we can probably move over that because this is just kind of, there's a lot of things and, and I don't call them obstacles or things, just kind of like naturally occurring functions to say that just because it's showing that all of this is potentially being zoned on that parcel, maybe only like 50% of the property or even less than that is actually under some sort of ability to develop it. Because there's a bunch of naturally occurring, albeit naturally occurring, heavily wooded areas, steep slopes, rivers, wetlands. A lot of natural resource type functions are inherently protected, not even by us, by FEMA and DEP. It says that you can't build there. So that's one where it, it's, it's part of a zoning overlay that normally you have those map layers in there. If you've gone to the live one on the zoning ordinance map site, you can pull up these zoning districts. We can have a little GIS tutorial type session if anyone's interested, but these are all publicly available for review as well. In addition to that, you fold over to this map. There's a lot of already eased properties, conserved properties in the township. Either ones that were sponsored and brokered by the township are ones where individual property owners have done themselves in terms of protected open space as a function of a land development process, HOA open spaces, trails, easements and other types of properties that are under some sort of like restricted use just based off of the fact that our comp plan was also trying to not only build and add additive housing units in the area, but also we want to make sure that we're keeping the rural character and charm, excuse me, of the township. So this is to say that zoning also has to be included with the understanding of just your natural features and functions that you have already a part of your township. So this doesn't, zoning doesn't supersede all this. It exists in concert with it, if that makes sense. Next slide. I, I think I already alluded to this, but not only just the parcel sizes, but also your land development, a function of it. A cost of construction is a big one. If you're a person coming in and trying to add density to allow permissible housing, it's going to be one where you might then be more inclined to do the investment into expanding infrastructure for not just the utility facilities that you would have to do, but also the stormwater component of the project, street improvements, everything. There's a lot of investment that goes into the horizontal improvements before you even get to build anything vertical. So by having additive density constructs, albeit some additive density in areas where you can kind of build around and kind of keep the character integrity of where you're building intact, that at least gets developers who are interested or private property owners that are interested to doing something different with their properties to be able to go through the land development process because they're more inclined to do so based off of the fact that they can build in a more flexible manner than currently is conditioned today. So that's kind of all part of it. So one common question I got in all of this was is, if we zone this, what does this mean in terms of an outcome? Because that's one where we want to make sure that we're addressing that because you want to understand what is the potential here? What are we trying to do? And is that potential in line with what we're trying to do as a township through a comprehensive plan? Once again, we're really thinking about this stuff. So with that, at the same time that we started this zoning project, we started this other initiative called Act 209, which Act 209 is a transportation planning process that essentially allows the township to say, we're going to adopt an ordinance that's going to assess a traffic impact fee. So when you go through that SALDO traffic impact study, that site creates a certain amount of generated road trips coming off that site. And then per trip, you get an assessed fee. So it might be something like, we'll call it like $2,000. And that goes into a transportation revenue fund that available to fund enhancements to do transportation capacity expansions. So it's kind of one where you can leverage the, the momentum of development to kind of fund other transportation initiatives within your, within your study area. So we said, well, where should our study area be? So we looked at essentially all the growth corridors because that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to incentivize growth in targeted growth areas. And with that, what does this mean? And you start looking at the actual parcels that are seen as from a engineer lane use perspective, properties and their potential to go under some sort of development function based off of what they're zoned as. And so this is one where then you start saying, well, all these other parcels kind of just start getting scraped off of the pile because they're not viable for development. And even then, the ones that are highlighted are probably privately owned in some instances. And that's not necessarily say that they're going to be inclined to sell their property. It's just a potential. It doesn't mean it's going to actually happen. But at least all the foundational elements to show what it means are intact and they're in place. So with that, if you were to add in the density, add in the actual traffic capacity, you're trying to say that the goal for the township is to add residential density for the purposes of adding housing opportunities in all shapes and kinds and different unit sizes. There's also as well one where we want to be able to get an, an industry into the township as well. If you want to have new jobs created for people that want to open up maybe an entrepreneurial type function in the township, or they want to repatriate their one business and relocate it here, which is a pretty kind of routine function. The land use assumptions report shows what the outcome is. And so if you kind of think big picture, potentially if all of this hits and everything resonates through and all the infrastructure improvements are in place and we get to the absolute apex of the outcome here, the total land use spelled out would be an additional 1,500 units, not houses, units. That could be in multifamilies, that can be through different types of constructed unit types because your zoning now allows for that. And then roughly about 18 million square feet of just, we'll call them non-residential space. Those are like, a function of that would be like a cold storage facility. That would be in that kind of function. And then where, you know, you look at your zoning districts that are kind of larger areas for that, you know, in the innovation district up by the airport, you name it. So that's kind of what that means in execution. So that's one where we're thinking about this because we want to make sure that if you add in the density, that the traffic study allows for the public improvements in those areas so you don't have to worry about, and you can mitigate the impact of traffic, which is a big issue with adding density. Next slide. Go back real quick, I'm just making sure I'm following. You go back one side real quick. So these are just, so what they did is they look at our proposed zoning map. This is just mixed use district. That's what that means. So it's just a zoning potential function there. This, I think, was part of the, I can't remember what residential district there, but that's what that is. So these will be reflective of what this map will ultimately look like, if that makes sense. Well, just targeted zones for growth and development. So yes, yes, that would be it. So these are the areas that would be naturally conditioned if you're to zone it in these ways and these property, property owners want to do additive development on the properties. These are the places that don't have a, a, a large build out on those properties that would be viable for eligible development in the future under those new kind of constructs of zoning. Does that make sense? Okay. No, good question. We can go back and, all right. So with that, density and everything like that, people go, well, what does this all mean? So over the course of the last two years, leading off the budget discussion, we do this thing called a state of the township update. Just what's happening in the township? What trends are we looking at? How does this fit kind of our budgeting principles? We're talking about investing into, you know, either organizational services or capital expansions for facilities. Just what are we looking at? And it's one where in some of these meetings, we talked about demographics. And I guess the good news is, is we've already done this kind of study. The bad news is that no one ever shows up to these meetings. But it's one where it's really good to understand as a community kind of where you're at and where you're kind of looking and you're going based off of your current existing demographics. Because the one thing I know about demographics is that they just tend to just continue on. Time kind of is the facilitator of where you're going in that direction. So with that, the current level of density in the township is one where I think we can all kind of agree that, you know, there maybe have been some subdevelopments that had targeted density. But if you just kind of expand that out as a township as a whole, we're a relatively undense community. You're thinking about the fact that your metrics show that if you have an acre in the current population count we have, it'll be you and a tenth of a person standing next to you in an acre of property in New Garden Township, or roughly about a third of a household per acre. So it's, it's not a very dense community. And I think visually looking around anecdotally, you can say that, yes, that kind of makes sense. So what we did is we took the LUAR assumption, which is those additive 1,598 units, and we said, how would these metrics change? Just to show kind of a reproofing out of what that would look like as a function of what's the increase? What's that kind of uptick going to look like? And it's one where we applied that and we said that the uptick would be based off of just some assumptions, additive people per household. The, these are just ones we based off of historical build out. My understanding is, is household sizes are actually getting smaller and smaller over time. So we didn't do that part because we wanted to show the highest conservative estimate of the strongest outcome, more so than if you were to kind of do a more reductive one and kind of say, well, this is what it's actually going to be. I'm always like a show worst case scenario. In this case, just show highest case scenario. So with that, in the additive units, you get to roughly about a township population count, granted, not by tomorrow, not by the next day, into the entire perpetuity and future of the township, a unit count that would support a residential population of roughly about 16,000. And in terms of like what that means, that's going to be on the next slide. But that's just good to say that, okay, that's the number. I'm familiar with that number now. Now, in terms of adding, in terms of what it means in terms of the metrics, that increases your unit per acre instead of a third, you're up to a half of household. So you're still not even a whole house per acre. And then with that too, you're talking about residents per acre. Instead of you and a tenth of a person, now it's you and nearly three quarters of a person standing next to you. So really, if you're thinking about in terms of density, you're not structurally changing the metric up in a way that would be seen as additive density beyond, you know, kind of a, 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 an understanding that it's still pretty much not dense. And that's just because it's being executed over 16 square miles. One person brought up that they don't want us to turn into Kennet Square. And don't worry, that will never happen, mostly because they are a small dense borough and it's one where they are still even at the highest apex, orders of magnitude sixfold the times of the township. And that's one where they're still trying to add to their density. So my understanding is, is they're going to be increasing that. And that's just because they're a tight borough and it's one where we might be next door to them, but the goal isn't to become a very tense urban borough, if that makes sense. I think we can all agree that that's not something that we're trying to do here. Next slide. Alright. Sure. Yeah, it was on the last slide. If you go back here real quick. So the question was, is what the current amount of housing units that we have? I'm sorry.
I don't know how to go back.
And I don't want to, i- if we can probably save questions just to kind of keep on because I want to be able to save time for... Yeah, it's up there at the first line. So 11,363 units as of the census of 2020. That's what we have to go by because that's what the, the census goes by. And then in terms of actual housing units, uh, I thought it was somewhere around here. If it's not, it's on the next slide. Actually, no, I went. Uh, 3,300 residential units. And that's also as of a census delivery there as well. And it actually proves out in our actual properties as well. Um, so here we go. Uh, so just going into some of the nuances of how we grew as a township, not to give a whole history lesson here, but I think everybody could kind of understand that prior to 1990, there wasn't a lot of stuff here. And then post 1990, there was a lot of stuff here, relatively speaking. Uh, but it's one where the town kind of township went through its growth spurt over a two decade period. Um, I think that's kind of proofed out and understanding that a lot of the units have been added, uh, to the community over that timeframe too. So this is just population count, but also one where not, I, I would assume that most of the additive units that were added were single family properties and most of those were added post 1990 rather than in existence prior to 1990. But with that, it's also good to understand that if you went through a growth spurt, but then you decided to stop growing, what are some of the things you think about beyond that? And that's one where you start thinking about, well, what's the next 10 years, the next 10 years after that? So we looked at what potential build out would be for 16,000 people, but we're already in a state of decline. And that's one where if you talk about not just what the population represents, but also what does that population distribution chart look like? And we're going to look at that next year. So populated, I'm sorry, not next year. Um, sorry, I got ahead of myself there. Uh, so with that, during that kind of population, um, kind of increase, uh, local agencies, Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, that's like the area that looks at to the eastern side of the Delaware River on the New Jersey side, kind of all up around metropolitan Philadelphia, down into, uh, kind of southeastern area of the state here. Doesn't include Delaware. They have their own planning, uh, group for it. Uh, but it's one where they do a lot of these kind of, we'll call them demographic regional planning type studies and on a township by township, municipality by municipality basis. And they go, based off of what your trend charts were, they do these kind of outward projections outward to 2050. And it's one where currently we are at 11,363. Let me get my pointer. I like my pointer. But by this chart, we should have been at roughly about a thousand more people. So their kind of estimates were ahead of where we're currently at. And then Kennet, uh, in 2015, uh, she's, I think now retired Diane Hicks was the old plant, Kennet Planning Director. Uh, they did their own regional comp plan forecast and they did a lot of the demographic studies on that one. And they actually had us in even a higher rate of roughly about 13,000. So they're about 2,000 people ahead of us in terms of their estimates. And any planner looks at, they just look at historical growth and go, this is kind of where we think you'll be. Because of course they did this in 2015, not in 2025, and this is where they projected us to be. And then with that, um, we added the lane use assumptions report from the previous slide and say, well, does the 16,000 number kind of ever make sense? And it's one where if you track it out in terms of differences in the two planning charts, we're kind of in that range. It's like 15 to 17,000 ish in terms of just what that kind of potential outcome for the township. So it really just kind of gets us back into those original discussions about what the forecast outlook will be for New Garden Township. So it's good to understand that because adding new density today doesn't exceed those expectations that were set from prior years. We're not exceeding that. I think we're kind of still within that bandwidth. Next slide. Sure. 2020, yeah, th- those are the most current ones. They do those kind of like intermittent type, uh, updates to the census, I think to 2022. Uh, my understanding is that's actually even lower, uh, than the 363. Um, so it's one where that trend is still kind of in a downward trend. But we won't have a true kind of full census count update until obviously the next census. No, we're losing more people than we're adding currently. And the reason for that is, and I was going to go to the next slide, our distribution chart. So it's one where previously a lot of that wave of people were in kind of two buckets. If you go back one, sorry.
I don't know. Sorry.
I'll have to ask this area up here. This is a test.
Oh, okay.
Previous instances, you had kids and then you had their parents. And then everyone came of age and essentially the, everybody kind of matures and ages in that same range. And it's one where your loss of school age children is not being essentially replenished by anybody behind it because everyone's kind of here and this graduating audience is leaving and therefore you're not replacing them. So therefore your population's going to go down. That's just, just an execution of your demographics over time. Uh, so with that, that also is kind of aligned with the fact that we're ever increasing in our median age as a township. So we're just kind of on this uptick. So every census, we've averaged about a four-year average increase in our township. My understanding is, is as of the next estimate, because remember this is DVR PC numbers and five-year rolling buckets. So we won't get the next update for them of their five-year projection until 2026. So that means that everybody in high school today will be gone. We don't have homes for them to live in, so they're not coming back here unless they're living in the kind of newly zoned accessory dwelling in your parents backyard. And there's a significant drop off between the two. So this isn't coming back unless you add new density for new affordable, attainable homes for new families to come in. They're going to have school age children because I'm not going to kind of insinuate here, but I don't think this audience is having kids anymore. So with that, you have an ever aging increase, no replenishment, and we're skewing more. So the age distribution, my understanding based off of the execution of this is this percentage is only going to increase and increase and increase and increase over time. Once again, demographics and time, it's, it, unless you're altering it in some instance, that's what's going to happen. That's the trend. So we'll kind of go on to the next slide. So with that, what does this mean in terms of who's here living in the homes that we currently have? And what that means in terms of maybe addressing some housing related issues of who's living here in the first place? So it's great that we have the auditive people that we have in the township, but it's one where things are working well for some and things aren't working well for others. And as a township, you have to go, well, what's not working well and how can we address it? Because you want a thriving community that's not driving issues in the wrong direction. So this is one, it's pretty common to understand is that i- if you look at this slide, the biggest takeaway should just be that we are a township of kind of has and have nots. Uh, we have a significant element of those kind of at that like net high affluent audience. Uh, and then we have those based off of the distribution because they start growing in bands here. We have a skewed population chart that's kind of below the poverty line and a skewed population chart that is on the strongest end of the, uh, economic spectrum here. Uh, so it's also one where you understand, well, if they're here and they're kind of below here, where are they living? The more likely to be in a rental unit, the more likely to be in an overoccupied rental unit. Uh, people have to kind of band together to be able to afford their units that they're currently in. And right now, those that would be seen as the ability to purchase new homes, you got to think about, well, what's that mean in the execution of the current market? You're really only able to potentially build out for new units based off of just market rates. I, I know that these people aren't going to be moving into the new Thompson Road property because those are going to be near a million dollar homes. Uh, so you're not solving it through that either. Um, so at some point you have to say, can we improve density metrics in certain areas to be able to build units that would be kind of on this spectrum, knowing full well that that's going to probably expand this area here? But you're still not able to really do anything about this because it's one where you have to go through a different function. It's more of a, can we partner with like workforce housing type developers in the township? I assume not in township, in the region to be able to kind of negotiate multiple different types of, uh, units in the township at different price points for different people based off of just where they're at a- as a function of, um, their, uh, just interest in living in New Garden Township. So next slide. Uh, another one I like to talk about is just, well, what's the land use being done? Oh, excuse me, what is the execution of our land use today? So I think this is another one, as you drive around, this shouldn't surprise anybody. Primarily residential, significant mushroom agriculture, that should come as no surprise. And then the commercial in this census is mostly related to mushroom production of his, in and of itself. So you're talking about, uh, ag-related types of industries, supply chain industries, or, or cold storage facilities that may or may not be for mushrooms. Also just might be just produce in general, but just those types of associated commercial functions in the township. And then you have to go, well, how much of that function in terms of dedicated acreage to that land use? And then what's its assessable base at? And it's one where you want to try to say that if we're going to have this here, we want to understand is what is it producing in terms of just value out of that to what we look for, which is, uh, uh, the assessable values of properties for military rates to support services, police, fire, public works, all those elements in there. Uh, and kind of who's kind of seen as a net positive relationship and a net negative relationship from just a property usage and a property valuation. And you can understand that if you're in an agricultural use, there's two types of agricultural uses. One is traditional farming, I think that's right, F. Uh, and in traditional farming, horse farms, crops, stuff like that, we actually don't have a lot of percentage of that in the township. And it's also one where they're not valued at a high level because agriculture as a assessed value of a property is actually at a lower value. Also, it's one where they might get an assessable adjustment on their property to lower their property, uh, assessments just because that's a subsidized mostly industry for agricultural function. I don't think I'm saying anything out of turn here that we already don't understand. But what Chester County does in its property records is it itemizes F40, which is a designation for mushroom agriculture because it's a different type of agriculture. And that helps us understand, well, how much of this is agriculture? How much of this is mushroom agriculture? Because there's two definitive difference or one, there's, there's a big definitive difference between that type of use. And since we are kind of, uh, 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 just, I know Kennet Square, you know, mushroom capital of the world, everything from mushrooms wise is pretty much grown in New Garden Township. And it's one where the, uh, the, the differential is the most significant in terms of the amount of land use and the amount of assessable values associated with mushroom agriculture. So I guess the common narrative is, is it's the smell of money? Well, not to the township. It's mostly the smell of money to the state. Next slide. So with that, how much does this support our property base? Because we think about revenues for the township for our general fund, significant source of it being for property taxes. A lot of that percentage comes from residential properties, uh, and it ends up being 35%. The other 35% is mostly for earned income tax. That's one where it's a different function of a tax. It's for 1% cap on incomes associated with whether or not you're a resident or whether or not you work here, associated with your job in the township. But we'll talk about property taxes and just assess, uh, against our millage rate. Uh, so with that, um, you apply the actual millage rate to the base assessments to show kind of as a percentage, what revenues are coming out of what? And you can understand it's like, okay, you know, we have a lot of mushroom agriculture, but it's only 2% of our total revenue. So it's not a lot of revenue that you're getting from that. And that shouldn't necessarily be a surprise for most people because the assessments are, are, are just at, at large, lower, uh, than other types of properties. Commercial, it's somewhat higher, but still relatively low. But it's one where this is, this is just the numbers and execution. This is what you're looking at. So the takeaways is just while we have commercial and mushroom agricultural function right now, accounting for 27% of our land use, it's really only less than 6% of our total revenues. So there's a pretty big skew in terms of just the gap differential there. And so you're talking about, well, if we're going to do this economic development path, and it's one where, yeah, we're already associated with these types of industries. Should we be additive to those industries? Or should we try to figure out something else and find new partners to partner with to kind of not replace, but supplement? Uh, so we have this, that creates kind of just current demands in the township. But maybe we should pivot and look at this as an alternative because we know in the execution here, it's going to be in, in terms of even the commercial vehicle restriction thing, more harm than good in terms of just the intensity of cost for coverage, excuse me, the cost to support those service industries from the township's perspective. Sorry, that was a mouthful. Next slide. Uh, so another one is, uh, so earned income tax. Uh, this is one where the reporting on it, it's all through Keystone Collections. I ask them a lot of questions. They don't answer them to my liking all the time, but I try to get as much information from them as possible. But it's one to understand kind of where your base is coming from and what that means. And also in execution, it's not necessarily one where you think jobs equals earned income tax because that's not necessarily the case. Uh, but with that, the clean understanding is, is if you are a resident of New Garden Township, half of your revenue goes to the schools, half of your revenue for earned income tax goes to the township. So we're already saying if you're a resident, there's a 50% use of it going to the schools and that doesn't come to the township at all. So in terms of just a force multiplier, you multiply that by 50 for a point five, and that's what your outcome usually is. Uh, so it's one where you really have to tighten up the density to get as much value out of that as possible because if you proof it out over low density residential development, then you have to say, well, is it kind of inclined for us to do, you know, uh, uh, more valuable home bills because you're just going to get more earned income tax like for, for like on a per unit basis? If that makes sense. But it's also one where to kind of understand, what about this non-residential side? And so for 100% of all of our earned income, earned income tax, 80% of that comes from residences. 20% comes from businesses in the township. Because it's also one to understand if I am a resident of London Grove and I work in New Garden Township, London Grove gets my earned income tax. That tax doesn't come to the township. So it's kind of one where even if you were to say, we're going to get a bunch of jobs creators here and there's no units for people to live, they're associated with those jobs and they live in other communities, you pretty much just lost half of your revenue possibilities for getting that full 1% because everyone's living everywhere else and working in the township. Unless you set some sort of like, you know, uh, for, for pure license, since you put it in your community or, uh, corporate policy, that all employees have to live in Delaware. That's kind of like we get the full 1%. But that would be the execution. They have to live in another jurisdiction that does not have earned income tax to get that earned income tax. So it's kind of like a, 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 a measurement of what is the value for new industries? What is the value of kind of where people live and where they work? Uh, it's kind of proofed out to say that one thing is understand that if you're at least a resident in New Garden Township, the understanding is half of that revenue goes to the township. Um, it's also good to understand in terms of just the strength and integrity of the types of jobs associated with, uh, the largest industry that we have, which is mushroom agriculture. It's kind of proved out that they provide a very strong kind of foundational element of it, but it's one where the per job basis is actually not high. And I don't think that's kind of a stretch of imagination. Uh, the hourly wages associated with somebody who works on a mushroom farm is, is very, very low. So therefore on a per employee basis of that, you're going to be pretty far down the chart in terms of just, uh, kind of like a per, um, additive basis. So if I have a, a, a farm and it has 50 employees, that's, that's, you know, uh, what it would be. But in actuality, you know, they would be kind of added down here rather than up here. That's just the execution of that. Next slide. Uh, so wanted to kind of wrap this all up in terms of just why this zoning thing kind of comes to light and the way that we're trying to do it. It's to say that we have kind of multiple initiatives that we're trying to address. And zoning is just one element of it. There's a lot of other things that have to be done. And so it's just part of the overall strategy. Uh, but it's one where, uh, we're trying to kind of reinvigorate some additive growth in the community to keep the tax base strong by adding to it, being able to keep the current millage rate at its current level or possibly lower as much as it can be over time to not increase the burden for current existing taxpayers to fund services in the township. And of course, those services are skewed for us significantly towards the public safety apparatus, you know, police, fire, public works, community development safety, those life safety inspections functions. And then in funding increases for capital improvements, like the Hill and Dale Road project, things like that. We want to be able to be able to be strong enough to respond to future DEP mandates for future stormwater initiatives. Like all these things come down, they're kind of unfunded to the townships. And we don't necessarily have the ability to scale revenues because if you look at your property tax rate, it has to be considered in sequence with your county rate and your schools rate, which is astronomically much higher than it is in the township. So we try to say, what are other ways that we can do this? Growth is one of them. Another one is just housing shortage issues. You want to be able to have a viable community into the future. You want to be able to attract new families to what is a waning school population count right now. It's actually already down and increasing and, and descending, uh, further to the, uh, kind of negative trend. Um, and that's in confirmation with schools. Uh, just as an update, we're going to be having some kind of other public agencies kind of come into the township to provide presentations about kind of zoning impacts on their specific functions. So we've been speaking with schools, speaking with, uh, Kennedy Area Community Services, speaking with our business community, the Southern Chester County Chamber of Commerce. And we're working on now and having future monthly presentations. So the expectation is, is they can address this, uh, more in detail. I'm not a school administrator, so I don't want to, you know, kind of go out of turn there. But that was my understanding is it's actually, uh, continuing to go down and, and that presents a lot of issues as well. Uh, we want to be able to kind of say that if you can tap into some of these future economic initiatives to improve job creators in the site, to be able to say that, you know, we're going to try to get a more viable business community function here. We have industries, but we don't have like, like the amount of supportive, I don't say retail, because every time I say retail, people think about purchasing like a refrigerator. That comes up very often. A lot of people are infatuated with buying furniture in Delaware. But we're talking more about restaurants. We're talking more about personal service shops. We're talking about, uh, people putting in like, uh, they want to do like an HVAC type business. So it's kind of more like associated with denser areas, those kind of, uh, those types of, we'll quote unquote, commercial uses, small business uses, that's a better way to say it. Um, and then of course, we want to leverage improvements to be able to fund our own enhancement projects that we don't have the money to do ourselves, especially since they're on state roads. Uh, so with that, we're trying to find multiple different initiatives. So with that, we're trying to find multiple different initiatives. It came up at the one meeting we're talking about, just the stadium arena type use is just an economic initiative for youth sports facilities. That's currently in progress. Where that goes, it's still yet to be determined. But we're trying to find commercial anchors in some of these business districts that could be viable for improving upon the, getting the property under development, to add those mixtures of uses, to increase ratable taxes. Because we're trying to basically find any ability to not necessarily just do residential loan or just do industry alone, with kind of a mixture of that as well, to enhance amenities in the township. And also with those being kind of viable commercial anchors, to incentivize developers to cover a lot of costs for the public improvements, because that's one where we're up against the wall with, well, because there's already, I didn't even say it earlier in that, or at least didn't say it enough, the existing lack of sewer infrastructure in the township is pretty rough. There's a lot of need to expand that as well, because more rate payers means the ability to work with Aqua to be able to negotiate lower rates in the future. Is that going to be 100% success rate? But it's one where we at least have the justification to show that. Next slide. So that's it. Sorry for taking up at least a little bit of time there, but I felt it was kind of helpful to maybe broker a different dialogue that what has been maybe assumed about the zoning ordinance. And then we can still take inputs and kind of fold them into the iterative process. Like I said, iterative process as we're going through this, to be able to come up to what we were looking for is a very transparent, somewhat consensus built, strong outcome for the community. So I'll stop there and open it up for public comment and you.
Chris, that was an excellent presentation. I thought the materials were excellent as well. You went through it very quickly. You went through the map part of it very quickly. You went through a number of real estate terms very quickly. If I'm a resident and I have questions, or I'm an HOA and I want to know how this impacts my HOA, what should I do?
Step number one, call the township. Easiest way to do it.
Call who?
So we have our central line. It's 610-268-2915. We have a community development staff as kind of the experts in the room. So we have two certified zoning officials that can provide a significant amount of information, sorry, Robert, about zoning rules and executions. And it's one where if you don't have an answer, we have our land use attorney slash solicitor here to provide explanations as well, as these kind of strong understandings of how this pertains to execution of the zoning ordinance. We're also currently still working with Michael Baker International, who's our zoning consultant. So the good news is, is we have a good bench and a deep bench currently to get you answers as soon as we possibly can. But I would say step one is either email or call the township. It's the best way to get information, rather than third hand or second hand, whatever it ends up being.
What if it's a whole HOA? Are you willing to go to an HOA and sit down in their community center and walk them through all this information?
Yes, yeah. I've done a few HOA engagements already at the request of the HOA boards. They've asked me to come out. I've spoken, I don't know if anybody in this room has been part of an HOA where I've spoken at, but they've been pretty positive dialogues out there, maybe get some better understanding. But it's not one where we're trying to be restrictive in the information. I think we can probably show that we've been very, jump how high, we've tried to meet the how high as much as we possibly can as a staff to answer questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, at this time, we're going to go to public comments. So if you gave me a yellow slip, you're welcome to come up to the microphone. Please state your name and your address and then provide your public comment. Again, three minutes is the limit, always has been. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you very much. That was really good presentation and it gave me.
Just make sure you're speaking like as close you can. Sorry about that one, you know.
I'll try to hear you. Okay. Is it turned on?
Maybe just hold it off.
Okay.
Is that better? Yeah, there you go.
Great presentation, thank you. It was much better to understand.
Just name real quick.
Michael, and I'm at Broadrun Ridge.
Sorry, yeah, just for the public record, we fold this into our minute. So name and address for before then, it just helps.
Name is William Michael, 8 Wilkinson Drive, Landenburg, PA. We're in Broadrun Ridge. Just a couple of quick questions. How have we addressed the investment community into, and fold their thoughts on the local ones into the zoning plan, so that we get their buy-in ahead of time? Rather than, it's not the zoning plan and then the investment, but let's see if we can bring them in. That's one part question. And what happens to the survey input? Because we passed that survey out there. How's that getting addressed? And then the third question is around the tax burden of the mushroom and commercial? I see that now, it's a lot less, but they take up a lot more, obviously, room. Is there plans to maybe address that in a more equitable fashion? So there's three questions.
Yeah. Just want to make sure I understand. So you're talking about engaging with the investment community, you're talking about developers?
Yes. Developers can be investment in general, basically, here's the plan. Would you be willing to invest in these areas if this was the plan? And they can apply their expertise to what we're proposing as a community. Does that make sense?
It does. In terms of having that lead the day for determining a zoning map, so right now, we've had as probably a best mixture of representation in our task force to be able to kind of understand that, is this seen as like a business friendly type of zoning, if you will, for investment opportunities? We have a resident on there that's also a land use planner that also does development. So he's been able to provide a lot of clarity and discussions about what does and does not stipulate investments in a property. Because it's not just, every development on the board is not going to be some massive scaled national developer. It's going to be the property owners wanting to do it themselves. So you kind of have addressed it in both ends of the spectrum. So that's at least been folded into the dialogue for it. So what you're seeing is more of also an understanding of market demand meets kind of, you know, local constraints when you're talking about just execution of zoning and build outs on properties in the township. But to answer your question, yes, that kind of mixture of dialogue has been part of it since day one.
And that's the kind of nuance. If we knew a little bit more about that, it might help as well.
Yeah.
Like it does have the balance of, you know, what's available, what's the ROI, what's the investment appetite, will it fly?
Yep.
Right? That type of thing, so.
In terms of equitable, I would, I want to make sure I got the second question.
Survey input.
Sorry, our solicitor writes in shorthand, which is like an ancient Sanskrit form.
The second question was on the survey input. A lot of people would.
Yes, those are being collected by the actual zoning consultant. So right now, they're taking the last public outreach meeting, number three, and all of the surveys that were filled out online, all the emails, everything. They have a deeper bench than us. So they're a full consultant staff that's able to kind of collect the wave of inputs and better structure it into, these are things that were put out there. And that resonates into a second iteration of the map. Those ongoing discussions with the zoning task force group, future public outreach meetings, everything to say that we heard your concerns, we think this is where you're talking about, have that next dialogue. You got to start somewhere. So draft version 1.0 is where we started. And now we have public input that'll go to draft version 2.0, 3.0, whatever it ends up being. But the dialogue is still one where inputs are being collected. It's being collected by Michael Baker International. It'll come forward at a future public outreach meeting or future presentation about what was heard, what was brought in. And then you go forward with the next wave after that, so.
Do you have any kind of rough dates on that?
My understanding is the next outreach meeting is going to, because it's going to have to take time to take everything back, digest it, fold it into a new, not a new pro, but like an updated version. So May is where we're looking at right now. I'd like to get that as early as possible, because the goal is to get too close to a kind of finalized version before the public hearing process. So you want to have like all of your ducks in a row before you go public hearing before then. So the goal is to kind of get a finalized consensus of what is considered to be amenable and then move it forward in the hearing process. Hearing process, you want it to be more of a, like a formal version of the process, but everybody kind of understands what's moving through. In terms of equity, and we can't, maybe you clarify what you mean by that before we could just respond.
Okay, the tax burden of agricultural mushroom.
Yeah.
Right? And what they take up and the amount of land that they actually take up, right? Versus what residential pays in. If those numbers, I don't have them in front of me, but.
Um, just to understand, in terms of the.
Meeting the need for the financial side.
Yeah, we can't implement as a second class township or any really municipal form of government, like special use, yeah, they have like home rule charters, you need to have, but in execution, we can't just like discern between a residential property and like have them taxed at this rate and then a commercial property and have them taxed at that rate. Like we can't differentiate those. That's by law, but your Pennsylvania execution of municipal tax law is one where they view very lowly the ability for second class townships to do a lot of differing types of stuff. So we really have property tax and earned income tax. That's kind of it. Those are those hard constraints that we have to deal with.
Scenario is basically, we either build more housing that's more taxable income coming in, or we limit the mushroom.
Well, then the other instance is you tried to deploy things that you think would be kind of offsets for that. So like the commercial vehicle restriction type of function you could do, enact an ordinance that's all by law. And it actually is one where you're associating that impact on the community by saying that those who are driving around it and creating those conditions on the pavement. And that's one where you could issue citations for usage of those areas. And that's one where you can get some sort of revenue review. But it's like, is that going to solve the problem? No, but is an additive outside of this? That's what you do. So you try to find any program that can benefit.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for your public comments.
And thank you.
Next, next person? Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
It does help if you just hold it, yeah.
I will. Not a problem. My name is Patricia Barbera. I walk, I live across the street in Brittany Hills at 109 Longo Drive. And I'd like to build upon, I wasn't at last month's meeting, but I want to come here to remind you, and I think maybe I was, I misunderstood a little bit about what went on at the last meeting, but just to remind you how much people were opposed to the whole stadium concept. And thank you very much for what you mentioned today. A couple of things that I wanted to bring up. I've actually served on a zoning appeals board before in another state, so that I know the consequences of what can happen once you actually set these zones and the consequences of how people can abuse the zone. So similar perhaps to what I understood the previous person is saying, and to some of what you were saying, you know, yes, we need to increase the tax revenue. Yes, a lot of the younger people and a lot of other people are moving out of the township. I would like to suggest as well, that that might also have something to do with the fact that the township does not implement the scientific recommendations that were proposed by some of the studies that were done recently about the mushroom smell. So that might actually bring some more people into the township and make them want to stay if we actually did something to make, you know, the air quality and quality of life a lot more pleasant around here. So I'd like to see some of that implemented. And then also just, you know, from the point of view of what we're looking at, and thank you for going through all those different zoning, whatever. Because of where I live, I obviously would not like to see a stadium across the street. I understand we need to bring in revenue. Surely there's other things that are being considered and I'd like that to be considered once again, because I know how difficult it is to rezone once everything has been done. So please let's pay very close attention. And I'm here again to remind you about the huge outcry to the concept of a stadium over here. There's, you know, it has an impact on the street and the quality of life that we have over here. And a lot of us moved here for that reason. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rona Devane. I'm here in my capacity as a board member for the Estates of Harrogate.
Could you hold that? It's still tough to hear.
Here.
You're going to have to pull it out and like hold it, yeah.
That doesn't work?
Like karaoke night, you got to hold it, yeah.
Okay. I'm Rona Devane. I'm here in my capacity as a board member for the Estates of, Estates of Harrogate. First thing I just wanted to mention is the concern about changing the nature of the township. We, we did not choose to live in Glen Mills. People chose this township for the more rural nature. You mentioned the arena. What does that do? It brings a lot of transient people, more policing, more traffic. That doesn't really seem to benefit the residents of, you know, the. I do have a question about how much are we paying Michael Baker? They're a huge international firm. We're a tiny little township. Can you give us an idea of how much we're paying them to consult on this?
Yeah, so the zoning project was approved via the RFP submission process. So all those documentation is provided when, I think it was in the beginning of 2024. It was $99,000. Half of that's being covered by the county. So we're only paying about $45,000 of that out of pocket. And that's actually pretty strong, because $45,000 at a going rate for municipal zoning kind of overuse is actually pretty good.
Thank you. If I, if I did the math right, the proposal is to have more than 45% increase in residential units for the township?
Yes.
So almost 50%. And there's different types of residences. So there's a couple of concerns.
Just to real quick to clarify that, that's more reflection of the fact that, I mean, it sounds like a big number, but it's more of a reflection that the unit count is kind of already kind of low. So any increase on top of that is going to be a higher increase, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand.
So 45% is arbitrary?
Well. Not really. Like if you're, if you have a school district, so let me, I think it's great, morally great too, to offer affordable housing, particularly seniors. A lot of my neighbors live in senior developments. They don't put an additional burden on the schools, the school tax, like, you know, if you have more children, you need more resources in, in the schools. I understand there's a waning population, but I'm not sure that we really care about that, because we're the ones subsidizing that. We're, you know, we're paying for the resources for the, for the school tax. And that is our biggest tax burden, right? So if you're, if, if a good chunk of that is going to senior housing or that's not really an additional burden as far as school tax, but if you're talking about adding a lot of families that won't be paying the same amount, because as we know, school's tax is dependent on what your property value is. And so if you're talking about lowering property values, that burden, that additional burden will fall upon the already existing homeowners in the township. And what will that do? And that seems like a pretty significant number, if we're talking about families versus seniors, you know, seniors are additive. They're paying into the system and they're not really taking, right? Yeah. I mean, I'm not living in one of those communities, but many of my neighbors, you know, are. There is also the concern about average price of homes. So when our home values are X, and now you say this township, the average price of homes is lower, what does that do to existing home values? So that's, that's another concern I just want to bring up for, you know, consideration. As you know, I know you have received quite a bit of feedback, especially from the area that, you know, Parlo Point, Harrogate, Estates of Harrogate, Somerset. There is a big difference between having limestone storage and edge craft, which are very quiet, low impact, we'll call them low impact businesses. I know there has been proposed for years, a gas station, which is not needed. We have a gas station up the road. We have two in Hoakessen. There is this concern, the general concern is this use by right. And you did go over that beautifully. Thank you for that, so that you educated everyone. The ask is to eliminate that, either to make it another zone, so that the, there is a, there is a real density, you know, I don't want to say dense, there are a lot of homes that could be impacted and a lot of homeowners that could be impacted. And so we are asking for more scrutiny for any businesses that would go into that area, particularly when you hear about junkyards, pawn shops, gas stations. What, what that brings is traffic that, you know, when I say traffic, traffic vehicles, traffic of the types of people, policing that were, you know, is undesirable.
Can I ask you to wrap it up? Um, we have other people that want to talk. Thank you.
That's really, I think, um, I think that's actually all I, uh, that's all I have. Well, no, uh, just that the saldo, you did mention that, but that really is not protective enough, which is why we're asking for that, um, permitted by use to, um, not to be present in that area. And I know historically, the idea is to make things better, is it not with this rezoning?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you for giving me the chance to, uh, express the concern.
Yeah, I'll just say it as a blanket thing. If you come up, just grab the mic and start speaking. It's the easiest way to make sure you're being heard.
Anyway.
You can just hold it if that helps. Okay.
I'm a long-term resident's township and, uh, I'll leave it at that. The greatest concern I see in this township is the maintenance of quality of life. And moving ahead, I know that's what we all want to do. Now I'm looking down the road, maybe just a hair further than we're going right now. Was that a past experience for service in this community? Where I see hangups coming potentially will be on the need for infrastructure improvements, especially the roads, which we haven't been able to solve in 40 to 60 years. And even in the last 20, when it's been on the table, it's been dumped. 41 should be a lot different it is today. Because we're not in concert with Avondale Borough. And I know we got regional planning, you argue with me to an extent. We got Kennet Borough, look where the growth's gonna come. It's gonna come on those end. But here's the real problem. It's north of this township, London Dairy, West Marlborough, East Marlborough. And one group in particular that stopped the majority of this improvement has been the Save Group. And I doubt they've gone away. Until we address that, I don't see how we're going to improve our roads for all this you're expecting to have, which we can't handle now. Next thing, I come here, came here tonight, but somebody should know something. I think the sewer system can be expanded. I was told it can't be. And I ain't gonna stand here and argue with it. But we gotta definitely expand the sewer. We definitely gotta do something with these roads. And I hope our neighbors to the north of us start to understand because what they put upon themselves was more people using 926 and all these cut-throughs. And that's what we're having on Star Road, Laurel Heights Road, you name it. They're bypassing Avondale. I don't even want to use it certain times. You know, and I hate to go to Kennet anymore. Tough Kenneman. I was on the board in '06. We tore down those two buildings in January of '06. We went out there and watched it. It's still sitting there. We did a study on that Bollmer Pike 10 years ago or more. We know the problems, but nobody addresses the real problems. It's infrastructure. When we get the infrastructure right, the rest can go. There's another thing I'm proud of in this township. It's the Kennet Consolidated School District for their diversity of students. When you get out of this area and go into real world, we're gonna have to deal with the haves and the have-nots. And I look like you're trying, not you, but there's a thrust, more interest on the haves than there are the have-nots. And we learn that we're our brother's keepers, we'll all get along better. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Peter Morozinski. I live at 309 Hyde Park Road in Harrogate. I, I'd like to talk about the specific issue of Limestone Road. And I have given my written input and just to repeat it. My concern is the, the current and proposed zoning, I think will lead to traffic problems. I went back and looked at the 2018 plan. Because I figured, okay, you guys are basing this on the 2018 plan. And I found, and it, something's interesting. I, I searched for the word limestone road. It showed up 11 times. Most of those were references to the corner of Limestone Road and Route 41 about improvements that intersection. Just a side note, I almost got killed twice within the last two months at that intersection. So we all know it needs work. But anyway, there was no reference to improvements on Limestone Road. And in fact, what I found in that plan was a definition of roadways. And Limestone Road was given the, the tag of a major arterial. And in there, there's a, a matrix showing what the properties of that type of road are. And three things jumped out at me. One was that mobility is more critical than property access. So within that plan, the township has said it is more important to get cars through that road than it is to give access to anything. Which was the point I brought up in my written input is you put anything of any high volume traffic in there, like a gas station, a convenience store, you're gonna have people making left turns. We got a lot of truck, truck traffic. It's gonna be a nightmare. And I was glad to see that that had been thought about. The next thing was, it said there needed to be strict median control access. And I assume they mean by that, like having a, a third lane or something. Until we have that, there's gonna be a problem. They recognize the high truck traffic, which we all know about is getting worse. And they reference wider lanes and all of that, which is gonna take time to do. My point is, I don't, I oppose, and let's say I don't think, I oppose zoning the limestone road corridor the same as Route 41. It's a very, very different situation. Anything, you're gonna have to look at the volume of the businesses that might want to go in to see if someone, like I said, a convenience store, we're gonna have, I don't know, 20 people every half hour trying to make a left-hand turn. It's gonna be horrible. So until the road improvements are there, if they're planned, I do not, I think the proposed zoning for Limestone Road does not meet your 2018 plan. Your 2018 plan has a very different use of Limestone Road. That plan shows Limestone Road as a throughway to get to 41. And what you're proposing here with this zoning, that's not what you're gonna get. I also understand how difficult the zoning issue is. And I, I do. I have a son in the business and I've talked to him a lot the last two weeks. So I think it's, and you don't want to keep doing this. So I'm, what I'm asking you is to find a way to limit the development along Limestone Road so that we're not gonna get these issues, which were recognized in 2018. And whether you do that through conditional zoning or whether you, I would like to see a whole new zone for that area, that prohibits high volume, high volume development along that road. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
And, uh, if I can just, real quick. Uh, and appreciate the inputs and it's one where, uh, I think we got dialogue about Southwood and limestone. We did get dialogue from those in the Broad Run kind of area. Those inputs have already been collected and they're gonna be considered for those types of changes in the future zoning proposed map. So I just want to make sure that those are being addressed, those pain points. Uh, so that's part of this process. And it's one where the current reflected mixed use is more of an understanding that it was previously zoned as a commercial corridor. So it's just saying, well, if it's gonna be zoned in this new instance, it would be a commercial corridor under mixed use. But that's one where there's this dialogue of, is this even a viable commercial corridor? And that's also being discussed. So those issues have been kind of in took and we fully understand what you're talking about.
My name is Lydia Ackerman. I live at 101 Sawmill Road. I am a third generation Landenburger. Live on my grandfather's property. Uh, my main concern with you changing the zoning on Broad Run Buttonwood Road. If you're going to put in high-density homes, first of all, where's the sewage going? Second of all, where's the water coming from? And thirdly, where is the water runoff going to go to? Having lived in Landenburg all my life, Sawmill Road, you never used to have any flooding at the bottom of it. Now when it rains, the water runs down. My whole yard floods. My kid's sister who lives correctly across the road from me, the water runoff comes down, has now twice destroyed her wall. She's has a hundred and some thousand dollars put into a wall to keep the white clay, walnut run, white clay tributary from that. So until you address these issues, I don't know. I know you want to have low-density income and you want to have people to come into the community. But as Barclay Hook said, until you address the infrastructure, you cannot begin to increase it. That's why we have acres, so that you, an acre of ground, so you can put your well, your sewage system on it. So you don't have your whole road covered in a blacktop, your whole yard. So these are my concerns.
Thank you.
I'll try the karaoke method. Uh, my name is David Tideman, uh, 34 Wilkinson Drive in Landenburg. Uh, I first of all, want to thank Chris and the board. This has been a very professionally run process. We have differences of opinion, but I, you can't deny the fact that it's been run very professionally, given the opportunity for input. I would say, you know, we've got some neighbors here from, uh, my street. What you find in the real world is it takes a long time for the news of something like this to disseminate among neighbors. Even right now, we just have folks who are becoming aware of the process. I think you folks are all aware, it's difficult to get local information out to neighborhoods, have them really understand something as complicated as this. So I, I say that only to make the point that, you know, we definitely need time for folks in the town to kind of process the proposed changes. Specifically in our area around Broad Run Road, which we've just heard a comment about that from Sawmill Road. Um, you know, as I look at some of the wording that we heard tonight about the comprehensive plan, enhancing the traditional character of New Garden Township. Uh, my home looks out on a mill that was built first in 1769 along Broad Run Road. Uh, that is an ancient farm road. Anybody who's driven along it knows that. And I'm not here to litigate the whole issue of this one zone. But what I'm, what I guess I'm saying in general is that as you folks on the board are kind of overseeing the entire process, I hope there's a recognition that things that are proposed in kind of an academic sense by consultants that sound good, they sound like they're gonna bring, uh, development and things that we need and modernization and so on, may not be properly taking into account the overloading of traffic on our roads. And Broad Run is a great example of folks coming from other townships, from Delaware and so on, cutting through on a road that is completely overcapacity right now. And I think there are probably other examples of that. So I would just ask that this process be run very, very cautiously before we deviate from that phrase, the traditional character of New Garden Township and making any changes. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. That's the end of the, uh, public comment. Thank you everybody for your comments. That was very helpful. The board will take it all very seriously. Sure. Yeah, if you can state your name and address, please.
Kristen McCartney on Walnut Run Road. Um, so, uh, just some, some context. I've been here about a year and a half. Um, I came from Bear, Delaware, living in a, uh, townhouse for the prior 20 years before that. And when I moved in, it was a really nice area, lots of open space around it, et cetera. Uh, so fast forward 20 years, uh, it is now unlivable with the amount of development. And I also had an incident where I witnessed somebody get shot right in front of me on my street. So if I needed a sign to move, that was it. And, oh, where did I move to? Oh, New Garden. This place is amazing. It's low-key, low-density. You don't have all that here. Fast forward to what I'm finding out is happening here with this rezoning is extremely concerning to me because I've, I've lived through what happened. Um, and so what I, what I want to ask is, um, the feedback that you're collecting at these monthly meetings, is this, is it, is it the same as what you're doing? You mentioned over the summer, you're having additional hearings that are like, like longer? Just logistically, what is the difference between what's happening now? Should we, do we continue to come to these meetings or do we, we wait till summer?
Uh, so right now, it's one where there was a public outreach meeting, number three, where the first draft map was kind of released. And of course, the expectation was that we were gonna get a significant amount of input based off of interest in what's happening. And that was the first time we really had something to show about the project. Uh, so in terms of like, the swell of activity around it, we'll leave it at its apex. And then based off of the need to digest all the information, bring it back. The next outreach meeting will be that kind of update to that function. So my guess is in April, other than maybe, uh, some updates about the process, there won't be really kind of anything to divulge at that point. Uh, so public outreach meeting, number four in May would be that next one. And then from there, in terms of our consultants, uh, kind of, uh, services that that and the proposal, we then move into public hearing process, which are still part of a iterative function until you get to that final public and want to make sure Winnie is, is nodding or something like that with this. But, um, there's still more elements to provide public reviews on that final version of the map, if that makes sense. So there's planning commission meetings, which are iterative in nature to be able to, so I would say at least at a minimum of three to five additional meetings about this topic in the future that will all be advertised as public meetings. Uh, but not every single agenda for the board of supervisors will be a zoning-related meeting. We'll probably end up having to put those on like a special use, just in terms of just how long those hearings will likely be, just to get normal township business stuff done. And this project kind of through that process, if you will. So all this is to say that, please subscribe, please kind of get yourself on these listserv. We're gonna continue to advertise. Um, we're currently looking at ability to get like maybe postcards sent out about where to sign up and get information out there for everybody as an element of it. Just to try to make sure that if the route is chose to go outside of normal monthly public meetings, to do it because it's one where it's a standalone topic. We don't want to have confusion about when and where we're talking about this, this process, if that makes sense. I don't know if that answers your question totally, but, um, it's kind of still TBD in terms of when and where. But the goal is to have at least five more public meetings about this.
It, it's helpful. I, I, I was following the update website, um, but the February 24th meeting that you had about kind of like the separate move to amend the UD announcement wasn't on there. So I missed it.
Okay.
And I actually, quick question on that one. Um, is that a separate thing from the zoning?
From the zoning project? Yes.
It seems like you're trying to, like, we're trying to like fast-track that somehow. Like it's, we're trying to, because the, the zoning, it, what you proposed for the zoning is basically what this amendment has, so, but it's coming ahead of the other.
Yes.
Changes. Why is that?
So right now, we've been through a function of trying to target, or at least engage with active developers for White Clay Point. This was talked about at the last meeting in terms of what it's zoned as, which is a unified development district, which is essentially like a live, work, play, common like mixed-use zone site. It's been like that since, what, 1997 or so, at least in terms of its last amendment. And that's one where in current's execution of that, developers are looking at, we talked about it pretty extensively last meeting, like highest and best type use. What are those kind of feature-rich type amenities to serve as a commercial anchor, to get total commercial build-out on a mixed-use property? And that's one where we're wanting to look at, and I alluded it on the one slide, amusement tax-type functions to serve as that commercial anchor because you get ratable revenues on top of the fact that the, you know, commerce, like the accessible values of the property and associated jobs on that site as well.
And I, I, I watched the entire three hours.
But we have to kind of chew gum and walk at the same time with that. White Clay Point as a function of the township strategy to get that site built, lives kind of outside of zoning. So we're trying to work on figuring out what the vision for what that site be, then engage with developers to build that site. And that's one where we need to go through what is seen to be a defined use for that property. Because right now, we talked about this earlier, if someone's interested in doing that in the township, they can do it anywhere they want to do. They have to go through the land development process. So we want to use that as a definition for these specific zoned areas to allow it to be defined for a certain area. And then set conditions in terms of things that we want to be able to say, not this big, not that, like, uh, uh, significant in terms of like what a normal understanding of what a stadium arena is. And it's also one where we're looking at different types of, uh, kind of youth sports complex-type functions, which are very much associated with mixed-use developments for commercial and mixture of residential properties. And that's kind of where this is all playing out. So, yes, both are happening concurrently. Could we just sit and, and wait for a developer? It's one where how active or proactive do you want to be about something? We're trying to be more proactive at White Clay Point. want to be about something? We're trying to be more proactive at White Clay Point, because of all of the checks and the boxes it has in terms of improvements on Route 41, improvements of public. So I don't know if I'm over answering the question right now, but there's a lot of benefits for that, that, that process.
Yeah. Well, I don't want to go over my three minutes. Do you think maybe when we
Yes.
Okay. Well, 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 thank you. I appreciate the, the grace there. Maybe you could let us know what other meetings will be restricted, because I have a lot more questions and concerns about all of this. So in the future, when you have public outreach, too, let us know what to expect. If I knew I only had three minutes, I probably would have opted to come to a different session. So, thank you.
Sounds like you want to volunteer for the planning commission.
Maybe.
All right, I'll be really quick. Justin Bellaby, 150 Walnut Run. My theme that I wanted to bring to the group tonight, mostly about the arena, is if you give a mouse a cookie, if you're familiar with the story, he's going to ask for a glass of milk. If we put features into our township that are out of character with the historical use of the residents' traditional thought of this township, what comes next? Because the mouse's appetite is endless.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. We're going to continue into the agenda. The next item is the Basiani subdivision. If those who are here for the zoning, if you want to leave now, we'll take a little pause. I don't, I don't think anything's been made up. There's been a lot of input provided via email, and this input tonight was very good. The input last month, last month was very good. So we'll take it all in and consider it.
Robert, just real quick, which file is it? Is it the Basiani? But which, which, which plan set? Okay.
We're going to continue the meeting. If, those who are socializing, can you go out in the hallway, please, and close the doors? We have a meeting.
Hey, John.
Please go out in the hallway.
Tell people to get out, yeah.
We need to continue the meeting. Thanks for waiting, Robert. I'll turn it over to you.
So this is for 365 Egypt Run Road. You were presented the memo. It's a final minor subdivision plan. Basically, they're taking a larger lot and turning it into two lots. So it'll end up being 40.91 would stay with Laurel Valley, and 5.0 acres would go with Joe Basiani, which is seated over here to my left. They asked for the waivers, which seemed pretty reasonable. Planning Commission reviewed it at their February meeting. They had, the overall feedback was positive with a few minor discussion points. One was about the floodplain, and another was on, on lot water and wastewater. So the floodplain doesn't encroach upon the single-family dwelling and the barn, which were occupied up till a few years ago, was a rental property. The renter ceased using it, so Laurel Valley just, it hasn't had any occupancy. And they're wanting to sell it to Joe for his make-a-home. So outside of that, the recommendation was for the Board of Supervisors to approve the plan with the requested waivers, and a condition of the approval of the Chester County Planning Commission, not anticipating anything there. The only reason that it wasn't done prior to this meeting was the fact that they changed their fee schedule. So when the fee for their review was put in, it was 25 hours less. So we had to adjust that. That's what kind of brought the, the one-week timeframe difference.
Your three minutes are up.
I'd be happy to leave.
Just, I'm getting some technical difficulties. I don't know if I pushed the wrong button or whatnot, but the presentation mode and kind of the visuals have left. So I don't want, I'm trying to confirm if anybody can hear. Apparently, they can't hear, but they just can't say anything. So if I'm playing around up here, just ignore me for a little bit, but just trying to get the visual back up and running of the meeting presentation.
Approval of the plan?
Well, they've Got it. She got it.
No, it's on.
The waivers and the plan.
It doesn't say that on the agenda.
So, so the plan does not include any new construction. It's basically a renovation?
Correct.
Okay. And the applicant will be getting permits for everything?
Yes.
The waivers, I believe I understand, would be site analysis, erosion and sediment, stormwater. There's no earth disturbance.
Correct.
So, in my opinion, I think they're fair requests as well.
I just have a concern. This is a subdivision plan?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't say that on the agenda. That's my concern.
So it should be final minor subdivision plan?
Yeah. Approval of the plan. What's your time, Mike? What's your time on this? You have time? So we could do it next month. They can approve the waivers tonight, and then it goes on the agenda for next month?
For approval of
For approval of the plan. Is that all right?
Here you go, Mike.
My name is Mike Shearing. I think I know many of you. And I have the privilege of representing Joe Basiani on this little minor subdivision. I think what your solicitor's point is that the way that the agenda was printed says consideration of Sordo waivers for the minor subdivision plan. And I guess to be absolutely clean, it would make sense that Thing that I did want to add, given, and Chris's excellent presentation under the zoning, is this is kind of good news, because Joe's intention is to subdivide and purchase this five acres. He's also purchasing the six acres across the street, so that he can keep it in Act 319, and his intention is to make it his homestead. So that's, that's kind of a good news thing, that there are some folks Joe's age that are still trying to stay here and run the businesses and raise families, so.
So can we go with the waivers, and then next month?
Yes.
We'll approve the plan, or
Yep. Yes.
Hopefully approve the plan, and they don't have to attend again.
Any other questions or discussion from the board?
We don't have a review letter from the Chester County Planning Commission, so we should add that condition as well.
Yeah, that's in
On, on the waivers. So we're not approving the subdivision. It's just clearly the waivers requests. And then authorize to have it on the agenda for, I guess it would be
April.
April's meeting, and it would be final subdivision. Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the waivers?
Your friend.
Based, based on everything that was presented here, the grant the waivers that are listed in your letter, Robert. And they're also on the plan?
Yes.
I'll second Steve's motion, then.
All in favor?
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
No. Aye.
Okay. You're good.
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks, Robert.
Next month.
We have a breaking news in the camera department for the meeting. So we lost feed, but people can still hear. So I'm just going to present whatever's up here, so as long as everybody comfortable that they won't be able to physically see what's happening in the room, but they can hear it. Maybe that's good. Some of us are more camera-ready than others, but we just want to show that, you know, we're not trying to like obfuscate anything. So I just wanted to highlight that as well, so.
Thank you, Chris. You want to take the next item, Chris? Copper Leaf Ridge?
In terms of both the next two items, but starting with Copper Leaf Ridge, this is just another escrow release request being made for the Copper Leaf Ridge community, which for those of unfamiliar, it's the 98 Town Home Proposed Land Development, or excuse me, in-development community up on Bancroft Road. So they've asked for the second wave of escrow release due to functional build-out of the site. Things are moving pretty well with that development process. And this is just upon review of completion by the engineer, the secondary request. No other issues to report.
Great, thank you. And that's same with Hux Glenn, too, right?
Yeah, we would do these one at a time, but the, the, starting with Copper Leaf Ridge.
Okay. Can I have a motion to, for the escrow release of Copper Leaf Ridge in the amount of $105,472.17?
Second move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same with Hux Glenn. Can I have a motion to approve the release of $30,000 escrow?
I don't know, Winnie, if you had any other elements to this, but, okay.
Everything is resolved?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make the motion to release the final escrow on the Hux Glenn, the Bentley project, at $30,000, leaving a balance of zero.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nate? Chris, next one, UD and Commercial Industrial Zoning, re-advertising?
Correct. So this is just a re-advertising to restart the process. So at the last meeting, the initiative was tabled to kind of go into a re-review, if you will, with Chester County Planning Commission, essentially in the actual proposed draft ordinance, elements of the CCPC guidance in there. So that was included with some, not some, with restrictions for the use. And of course, the one resident brought it up. The goal is to say that we were trying to identify the use to find it, so it has kind of structures and restrictions associated with it. So should it be kind of seen as a viable function, that we're putting it in the right district with the right level of intensity around it. So this is part of the renewal of the Act 247 process, to have it be reviewed again by the Chester County Planning Commission, by the Planning Commission, and then ultimately for a future board meeting for approval at a public hearing process. Did I get that right, Winnie?
I think you did. And, and included in this, this modified version are the suggestions of the County Planning Commission. So there, they had a number of suggestions that we should include it. And I do point out that if a legitimate use is not provided for, it can go anywhere. So what this does is limit it to those two zones, as opposed to allow it anywhere in the township. I guess just a motion for me to begin the Act 247 process on this amended version.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the process for an amendment to the UCID zoning ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chris, moving on to the commercial vehicle restriction analysis?
Yes. So, I mean, it got brought up earlier in public comment, but, you know, we'd have kind of an understanding of the, the impact of commercial vehicles as a function of how they support our local industries and the usage of our roads, not just state roads, but township roads. And it's one where, you know, is that a, a function of a justified business use in terms of where properties associated with, we'll call them truck generators, if you will. So, you know, like a Long Star Road, Pengreed, not a stretch of imagination, that those farming facilities or truck generators are going to need to get access to those sites to be able to get the kind of onboarding of deliveries and taking things off-site. And of course, they kind of sequence in off of Route 41 to kind of say, easy, or excuse me, direct ingress into the area, and then direct outward, kind of out of the area. And it's one where in execution, over time, in the entire year, trucks kind of permeate all throughout the township. And so it's one where we did a review to say, where are those roads that we seeing the most amount of grade, like, commercial-grade truck activity in the township, to restrict usage based off of what is seen as a, number one, like a fully assessed, PennDOT-assessed structure about how you are kind of grading the roadway, what its impact are. And then using that determination to substant, excuse me, substantiate, I've done a lot of talking tonight, sorry about that, substantiate an ordinance that would be more effective to enforce against. So that's one where if you have a, we just don't want them there kind of policy, in execution, you're not going to get the, because you're going to get contested, like, well, why are you giving me these tickets on these roads? So you have to have a more of a justify, well, because of X, Y, and Z, at this level of detail. So if they were contested, you can then point to your ordinance and go, yeah, see, this is the reason why we did this. And then they won't be able to. It's also my understanding that right now, in execution, we have our current ordinance, which identifies all of the local roads that are truck generators. So it's very difficult to restrict commercial truck traffic on Star Road, when it's, the primary reason for Star Road having commercial truck traffic is to get into the areas in those, on those properties that we have there. That's different than like on Chambers Road, than on New Garden Road, than on a Hart, just these other kind of local roads that aren't seen as kind of a business-usage arteries to kind of get where they need to go. And so we did put some level of signage in certain areas, but the execution of signage doesn't necessi, doesn't necessitate a higher-level fee for a citation against those. Just let me know if I'm going too long about this. But this is one where it allows us to have a stronger ordinance, a stronger citation, and gives police to be able to do kind of modular-scale weighing onsite there, to then enact, deny, or citation. And of course, you know, that revenue recovery can come back to the township. So the goal is, yeah. So, all that is to say that this, tonight, approved the engineering study, to then justify the final ordinance that will have to come forward in another ordinance public hearing process. The goal is to have as many public hearings as possible this year. Yes, there is none? Okay, even better. So there you go. We don't have to do it. So spoke out of turn. We still want to be number one in public hearings, though.
So we have a weight limit on Hillendale, correct?
Everything right now is a Class B or higher. I don't think it's on Hillendale, though. We don't have anything on Hillendale. The only one we have on that side of the township is New Garden Road.
The two basis for it are that you damage the road, or it's safety. And the traffic in engineering will show that it's not safe, and that's made to it.
Right.
Yeah. And it's also one where it got brought up in a staff meeting, that if we were to improve the road, obviously, we're going to improve Hillendale Road, does that then make it like more strength, structure integrity for it? And that's actually not the case, too. So it takes it based off of just its, its roadway conditions, not future state or existing state, it's just the roadway in and of itself. Sightlines, you know, stopping points, traffic intersections, everything like that, gradient, all the things are considered.
Any other questions?
So this would be part of a, what we would normally do, and why we have our engineering budget, because for the most part, engineering for us is executed threefold. One is just an escrow reviews that are part of the land development process. We have engineering reviews that are done as an associated function of our capital plan. And then we have just kind of a general budget for just engineering matters. You know, we need to do these types of things in the middle of the year, but we never know what's going to come up and how much it's going to cost. So this is part of a, a proposal to use that line item budget for engineering uses for the township. So that's why it's, we haven't spent zero to date, but this would be $23,400, because it's a per-road basis. So if you do five roads, it adds up quickly.
Good. Is there a motion to authorize, Chris, to approve the quote from Bowman in an amount not to exceed $23,400?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Was there a question?
Ron?
Given the fact that Hillendale was, was again pushed off till '26, will this study potentially have an impact on redoing that? I mean, maybe we need to wait till the study to find out.
Shouldn't have an impact.
Yeah. My understanding was it wasn't that, and you're right, that was brought up at a staff meeting in terms of like, maybe we just keep it in a bad condition to get to- no, uh, so it doesn't have, and Kenny can probably, I don't know, I want to put you on the spot, Kenny, uh, in terms of, um, the condition analysis for the roadway, road conditions in terms of just what it looks like today doesn't factor into that part of this, as a part of the study. Did I have that right? Okay. Yep.
That's what I was-
Yep.
Thinking about is, will the study come back and say you need to redo, redo some of the substructure or other parts?
Yeah.
I just asked because I didn't want to look at redoing work.
That's a great question. And yeah, that came up, and you're, and you're right to ask. And also just to make sure for the record, Hillendale, starting in '25, will be finished by '26. So we're getting going this year. Very excited.
I personally like the potholes. It cuts down the traffic.
Thank you, Ron. Chris, you want to take eminent domain?
I can at least talk about what it's for, Winnie will go into the actual procedural elements of it, but uh, even predating my time here at the township, there was an initiative to get some, uh, uh, funding from a grant associated with a, it's called the Main Street TESA project, which is Transportation Fund Set Aside. That's what that stands for. It's a bad acronym, but that's what we're using. Uh, so with that, it was a function of that Tough Kennaman Streetscape kind of envisioning program. The only reason I'm explaining this again because it hasn't been brought up in some time. Uh, but it's one where we were able to secure grant funding to do the construction for that property, but it requires all of the right-of-way acquisition, all the permit, planning and design elements to it. And we're kind of stuck in that exhaustive state of trying to get just the signage of all the easements for the project in and of itself. And this isn't like taking down people's property or moving kind of things around. It's essentially two feet of take for a widening of a sidewalk in Tough Kennaman. And so the goal is to make it from its current state to a four-foot wide ADA compliant sidewalk that connects the post office to the corner of Newark and Main Street. And it's one where, uh, current ability to negotiate with owners about that level of take, very minor one, but the current ability for us to secure those easements has been exhausted. So of course, the next step is ultimately what everyone likes to avoid, but sometimes is a necessary function of just the eminent domain procedures. Uh, so to date, um, we're currently at the final stages of this moves forward of right-of-way acquisition, and would go forward with final permitting and construction, uh, starting in next year. And of course, that's a million-dollar grant that we're, we're using for this, not to the township's cost settlement. So it's, it's seen as a, a, a strong return on our investment of going through the process of all of the, uh, the things that the township is responsible for. So without further ado, Winnie?
So this is a resolution, uh, by the board to begin the eminent domain process. This is just for an easement over these properties. Um, and they are properties belonging to Sandra Lopez Serrano and Gabriela Lopez Serrano at 142 Main Street in Tough Kennaman. Lorenzo Lopez Villa Gomez and Maria Del Carmen Sanchez Vasquez at 140 Main Street in Tough Kennaman. And Jose Mateo Rodriguez at 132 Main Street in Tough Kennaman. So this resolution then authorizes to begin the procedure with the Chester County Court of Common pleas to file, uh, a notice of taking and then begin the eminent domain process. Again, it's just an easement for sidewalks, and there's actually a proposal for a small amount of money to be paid to them. So far, we have been unsuccessful. Um, and so we have to seek court approval to be able to put the sidewalk in. That's what this resolution does. So if you, if the board approves that, we can begin that process.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 202507 to authorize eminent domain proceedings for the Tough Kennaman Streetscape Improvements Project?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the Parks and Open Space Mowing.
Yes. Uh, this is pretty straightforward. It's a renewal of last year's contract, so, uh, I think it was two years ago. Um, we got a five-year proposed pricing plan with annual renewals at that same rate. So this would just be year three of a five-year, uh, uh, cost plan for the mowing contract. And this covers New Garden Park, uh, primarily New Garden Park, um, as like the biggest mowing area. And that's one where you can also have town hall, so essentially this entire lawn area here. Uh, and then elements of other public facilities and park spaces as well. And of course, the, uh, the funding is allocated across multiple different line items, so it's not necessarily 100% out of the general fund, but the price has not changed. So this is just, and it's all been part of our line item budget and our budget planning. So this is just approving something that we've already budgeted for.
Is there a motion to authorize, Chris, to approve the, um, mowing contract in the amount not to exceed $79,214.96?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Parks and Open Space Equipment Financing.
Yes. Uh, so when we secure, so one is, is the, uh, the capital plan to nominate the different types of equipment that we need to continue building our operational capabilities for parks maintenance, parks and open space maintenance, excuse me. Uh, the second part is, is to, uh, get the equipment financed, because part of our budget plan is to, uh, finance it over a five-year term, lower the annual kind of impact on the budget, uh, in terms of the amount of costs associated with it. And then, of course, uh, parse that out, mostly, uh, 60% of the funds in the open space fund, and then the rest of it being in the capital fund. Uh, so with that, we need to, by resolution, uh, approve the financing, uh, that kind of obligates us to the kind of financial term, financing terms. Um, so it's actually one where even when we, uh, got the, the Public Works Vehicle financed approval, and I think it was in December at six and a half percent. Uh, this one is at 6.05. So there is some savings to it just by just the fact that it's moved three months to the right and rates have gone down a little bit. So some financial relief there, not a significant amount, but just some, it helps. Uh, so this is the, uh, the resolution today to secure that financing, which, um, ordering lead times, to my understanding, because we're at the financing stage, it was pretty quick, which is good because it's right in front of the full seasonality of doing parks maintenance, and so it helps to have the stuff ready to go.
Thank you, Chris. Is there a motion to approve, uh, Resolution 2025008 to secure financing with Fidelity Bank for the Parks and Open Space Equipment?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Spring cleanup.
Kenny, do you want to do it? I mean, this is the real reason people came here tonight, so you ready?
Mm-hmm.
You have-
Lots of movement. Alright, so it is time for our annual spring cleanup. Um, this year, we're going to have it the 25th, 26th, and 27th of April, which is a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We decided to take out Thursday this year because the last few years, we had very, very minimal attendance, and we sit around twiddling our thumbs most of the day with not a, not a lot of people coming in. Um, it will be at our shop right along 41. The Fuel Farm Replacement Project will be finished by then hopefully, so that won't impact anything. It is a free event for township residents. Uh, you can bring yard waste, non-hazardous materials, appliances, uh, scrap metal like bikes, patio furniture, grills, stuff like that. You can also bring tires and free-on items like refrigerators. There is a small charge for that depending on the size of, of them. Uh, we can't accept any electronics, uh, explosive devices, ammunition, propane, gasoline, oil, diesel fuel, stuff like that, um, or oil-based paints, chemicals from the pool, pesticides, drain cleaners, and stuff like that. Any questions?
Well, it's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Welcome.
Was there a-
We cannot take them because they're a pressurized device. Right, yeah. Yep.
Thanks, Kenny. And then next is the manager's report.
Yes, this should be pretty brief. Um, and so the ongoing dialogue about usage of the Hiles property and kind of the last time we left off, it was kind of late last fall that we were talking about possible amenable uses on the site as maybe a stopgap solution, maybe a full-term solution. Everything was kind of fully reviewed. Uh, so it's funny that, you know, the one kind of, uh, uh, original intention around renting the property kind of went through all these kind of mixtures of additive functions, and then we circulate back to the fact that we would recommend to rent the property. Uh, so with that, it would be one where, um, if there's any board, um, inputs on how that process plays out, uh, for my recommendation and Winnie's recommendation would be just to go through a kind of brokerage-type function or property management. Essentially, it's just go through an open process. Um, and that's kind of for intent to have it be at a listed rate that would be set by the board at a future meeting. This is just to kind of get that final, like, is this something that everyone's willing to kind of go with? Uh, we did get some input and feedback from the Historic Commission that had previously kind of, uh, uh, added some proposals to the site that were then kind of looked at from the execution of the driveway permit, which was the big kind of obstruction to getting it available for public access. Uh, and then ultimately, um, had a good conversation. She reached out today when she saw an agenda, City Hiles has been involved kind of in the process as well, and kind of said that, you know, she would, you know, is in support of, of the rental function as well. And this is seen as like a, keep it viable, keep the site in good condition, not at the cost of the township for paying for all like the utilities and stuff, but just kind of active management of the site being done by somebody who's just on the property renting it out. So um, price to still be determined, whatever that means, process to still be determined, but just this gives us guidance to say that this is the route you want us to take as staff, and we'll move forward. Did I say anything out of turn, Winnie? Okay, good, alright.
Do we have a timeline on when it might be back up to snuff? A timeline on when it might be available for rental or things like that?
Uh, my understanding is all of the inspection follow-ups that we had, because if you remember, we had kind of like a, we, we graded ourselves on a pretty tough curve in terms of some of the BIU-type functions. That's Building Inspector Underwriters. So we had somebody go out there for residential inspections. The improvements, my understanding, have all been made, but I don't want to say that that's definitive, so I'll clarify that. Uh, our Parks Director is currently offsite at a conference this week, so when he gets back, um, we'll kind of round that out and prepare it for, uh, a future agenda item here in the near future. Hopefully, we would like to put the rental property kind of up at the same time with the height of seasonal kind of real estate activity, just so we know that we can, uh, get it rented out as well. So we're aiming for that like May-June timeframe.
Okay.
Alright, sounds good.
I don't want to jump ahead of anything, but I noticed, um, on the Forward Fly Group that Mike Wolfen was, um, going to have a research assistant come down to help him this season, and he was looking for people with Airbnbs that might want to offer up a property. And so I was thinking, if we have a property that might, we can reach out to him about that?
Any other, uh, discussion from the board? About anything? No?
Well, when you say anything.
I guess, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?